Welcome everybody to today's city council meeting. Monday, January twenty seventh, I now call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
District one, council member Casey.
Present.
District two, council member Vera.
Here.
District three, council member Otero.
Here.
District four, vice mayor Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Everyone stand up for the invocation by Conners on the series first Baptist church followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Heavenly father, we come to you to ask your blessing and favor on all the proceedings of this night. We ask for you to bless our city. And you would be at work to keep our community healthy and safe. Ask for your blessings and protection on those who protect and serve us. Our police department, sheriff's department, our fire and rescue department. I ask for you to bless this council. They may lead and serve us faithfully in the best interest of this community. Pray that we would learn to give thanks and praise to you for all you provide for the city of series. Ask in the name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. We will now move into presentations. And today we have a presentation for the redevelopment and economic manager Julian. How are you doing today, sir? You're gonna go up here today? Awesome. I feel this is gonna be a great presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the community. Economic development is a cornerstone of our community progress. At its core, economic development represents the efforts to grow and sustain the economic wealth of our city. While being of our residents, it's about creating opportunities whether through jobs, increased income, or a strong tax base to improve quality of life for everyone in the community. Here in series, our economic development strategy focuses on four key areas. Business retention, supporting and sustaining our existing businesses through collaboration between city departments, the chamber, and other key stakeholders. Business expansion, helping our businesses grow and thrive with the assistance of city services and partnerships. Business attraction, bringing new businesses to series by leveraging partnerships with developers and property owners and through their proactive work of our community development department. And downtown and community revitalization, restoring our downtown to its historic role as the heart of our community and strengthening its role as a hub for local life. A stronger local economy directly benefits the city of series. It improves our financial picture, allowing us to fund public services, facilities, and programs that enhance the lives of our residents. Series is an emerging community with a population of around forty nine thousand three hundred and two, reflecting its steady growth since two thousand twenty one, according to the latest U.S. Census data. The average age of series residents is thirty two, with the promising median income of approximately seventy six thousand eight hundred and sixty two. This slight increase from twenty twenty one. For twenty twenty four, series has seen approximately three hundred and sixty eight new business applications submitted. We have approximately two thousand business business license, active business license, that includes contractors, small and medium and large companies. Currently, we have about three hundred and twenty five businesses employing fewer than five people. These figures highlight a thriving local economy and an active demographic profile for both residential and commercial and investment opportunities. The economic development department has increased its business engagement and retention efforts in the community with the focus on recruitment efforts for vacant buildings in downtown area and for vacant lots in the surrounding areas. Currently, we have four sites downtown that are in the works. Our business retention, this year, we successfully reached out to a hundred and eighteen established businesses within the city. Offered support and help connect business owners with various resources while also identifying key trends, such as addressing issues related to unhoused individuals, poor lighting, lack of landlord support, just to name a few. We engage with ninety six new businesses that applied for their business license utilizing welcome emails, letters, along with in-person site visits to foster positive relations. Utilizing applications like Constant Contact, I initiated four thousand nine hundred and seventy four emails with four thousand two hundred and sixty delivered at a rate of forty six percent. Economic development will continue to engage with businesses and provide support and linkage to resources. This year, our efforts in business attraction focused on engaging with potential developers at the ICSC event in Monterey. We did follow-up calls, and over the past twelve months, we have reached out to seventy seven prospective developers and businesses ranging from small enterprises to large franchises, such as Inspire, Sonic, Chick-fil-A, Blooming Brands, Crave, Stapleton Group, Lockhouse, and Cosmot, among others. In addition to attracting new businesses, we are providing traffic flow data analysis as a valuable resource to enhance series visibility in the market. Our traffic cameras have major intersections have captured impressive flow, highlighting the commercial potential for many areas in series. Despite our population size, series's four major intersections have experienced nearly four million vehicle trips, showing significant local and visiting trips to our city. So just to give you an example, and I didn't have a slide, and I apologize. I took a from plaster AI, this is the data from November of twenty twenty four comparison. We compared Walmart in series, Super Walmart, to Target and Turlock. And just in the month of November, our Walmart had a hundred and forty five thousand visits, and Target and Turlock had a hundred and five thousand. In-N-Out Burger compared the Turlock In-N-Out to In-N-Out on Gateway, our gateway had fifty five thousand in November, and In-N-Out and Turlock had sixty six thousand, so we're not too far behind. Raising Canes comparable from the Hatchet Raising Canes to Palindale in Modesto. Our Raising Canes reached fifty eight thousand visitors, and Raising Canes in Modesto had fifty thousand visitors, but we superseded them. This comprehensive traffic data underscores the desirability of these locations for businesses that depend on high visibility and easy customer access, ultimately contributing to our economic vitality. We had the opportunity over the last twelve months for grand openings. We had flawless sweets, AMPM, Nick the Greek, Tractor Supply, El Talasco Snacks, Cupcake Boutique, just to name a few. We had two ribbon cuttings, Ochoa and Smirnoff Park. And community events like Love Series, the Series Street Fair, Concerts in the Park, the Hot Air Balloon, continue to engage and raise awareness of our cities, of our city, our downtown, and small businesses. In addition to these events, economic development initiatives have established several community courses for the first part of twenty twenty five. These courses include a six-week cohort on business entrepreneurship and partnership with Stan Soss Equity Partners, and a workshop focused on improving credit and managing debt supported and sponsored by Chase Bank. Staff have, we have identified ninety vacant parcels in our city with great potential for industrial, commercial, or housing development. In the past month, we've successfully reached out to twenty two property owners to discuss development opportunities. We are committed to gathering resources and prioritizing manufacturing and family entertainment, while also collaborating closely with the planning division to address housing needs. However, it is important to address the challenges we face. Perceptions and reputation, we continue to work on overcoming challenges related to social, economic, and aesthetic factors. Geographic, while our Central Valley location is a strength in some ways, it's sometimes perceived as a limitation. Downtown challenges, challenges, our downtown struggles with outdated aesthetics and limited retail and service users, positive building, and our limited second generation buildings. But there's also many strengths we can build on. A committed community for growth, a strong collaborative city team, active partnerships within the chamber, the series unified school district, and other regional stakeholders. Currently, the city of series has thirteen potential business, businesses pending planning submission or submission to the building department. We currently have six businesses that are currently under construction. Panda, Lyons Plaza, Wood Springs, O'Reilly, Reb Hub, and the NAC Plaza on Mitchell Road. The goal for twenty twenty five will focus on how to provide incentives to current and future businesses, while also looking at downtown improvements. Continue with weekly business engagement to build positive relationships and provide community support. Continue to detract new businesses and develop community programs that benefit both residents and businesses in series. As we address challenges and seize these opportunities, it's vital to remember that we are all ambassadors for the city of series, every staff member, resident, and business owner contributes to our collective success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, resolution two thousand seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address city council any agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chamber doors. And we will begin with in-person comments. Anybody in the audience that would like to step up, make a comment today? We'll now begin with our representatives.
Good evening, everyone. Justin Farkas, representing the office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. Happy New Year to you all that haven't got the opportunity to see it. We have been hitting the ground running, though, in the Assemblyman's office. First and foremost, our top priority this year, and I think if you've watched the news, you probably are well aware that California has been on fire, especially our communities down in Southern California and Los Angeles. So the first and most pressing issue that we handled this year was providing immediate relief to those who are suffering from the fire and providing funding for that wildfire recovery. Republicans in the legislature also attempted to present amendments to that to legislation that we did end up passing and voting for that would provide additional funding toward wildfire prevention and mitigation, but that was denied on a party line vote. Assemblyman has also joined the Armenian Legislative Caucus, which is very important considering the strong Armenian population that we do represent in the state legislature. And we've also gone and presented six bills so far this year. There has been a new cap placed on the number of pieces of legislation that we can present, probably for the best. The previous cap was at fifty, we're now down to thirty five, so a lot less laws that you'll see pass or much bigger bills that you'll be seeing pass in the state legislature, depending on how the body as a whole decides to take that rule. We have a couple bills relating to the speed and transparency into which our elections are held in the state of California. I know especially for the city of series who had a very grueling congressional race happen. Here, we understand the frustrations that much of the community felt in terms of understanding who their congressman was gonna be and the near month that it took for them to find out. We're also looking into the impacts on lack of access to community colleges and rural communities. We're also taking on a bill that was inspired to by a situation that occurred here in the county. This is Assembly Bill two hundred and seventy seven and would require criminal background checks for behavioral technicians and others who work with autistic children. It would also prohibit any employer who provides services to minors from hiring a behavioral technician who is not verified by the department. Got a couple other bills, we're touching a lot of topics this year, some a little bit out of our comfort zone, but we're trying to make the best opportunities possible here in the state of California for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any members of the public who would like to make a comment? Seeing none? Well, I believe we do have an email, right?
Sorry, what's that?
We have an email to read?
Yes, we do have an email. This email was received last week with the intention to be read at the January thirteenth council meeting. However, it was received after the deadline, so keep that in mind as I read it. This is from Carol Sullivan. Happy New Year, Mayor Lopez and City Council. In reviewing the numerous agenda postings for this evening's city council meeting, it was noted that an item has been removed from the consent calendar related to allowing the council to approve a donation of a police canine to the series police department. When reviewing the agenda posted on the eighteenth, I was excited to hear of this news as that is a tremendously gracious donation for this community. As a former affiliate with the Western States K-9 Association, I am aware of the amount of effort that goes into this training and the time commitment required for bonding with these remarkable animals who serve the community. I was disappointed to see this item stricken from the agenda, and I would like to provide city manager Dunford an opportunity to explain to the council and community as to why, during a time that he requires all departments and divisions do more with less, with constant cuts to budget citywide. Why would the approval of this donation be stricken from tonight's agenda? This will do nothing other than extend the amount of time required readiness, training, and certification will take. Presumably, this officer and canine will not be hitting the streets of series anytime soon, and I seriously hope this does not jeopardize the donation in any way, resulting in a level of service reduction for the city of series. On a similar note, over the last few years, we have listened to several series PD employees speak at these meetings about disparities in pay amongst series and neighboring agencies. I welcome you all to do some basic research in pay scales at neighboring agencies, as well as annual statistics provided by those agencies. I am certain you will find that our police officers and dispatchers are far busier than their counterparts, who are paid substantially more at neighboring agencies. I can drive just thirty minutes over to work for the city of Tracy as a police officer or dispatcher and make considerably more money than here in series. Salary numbers aside, what is also not usually considered in these comparisons is the workload and quality of life. I am sure that Tracy PD employees are all providing excellent service to their city. That being said, they seemingly have unlimited resources at their disposal. They have a large number of special assignments. They deal with much less violent crime and gang activity. Make more money, respond to fewer calls for service, more diverse special assignments equals more opportunities for incentive pay, higher probability of returning home to my family every night. Your series public safety employees deserve better. They deal with an incredibly high volume of calls and crime, which they are combating with fewer resources in almost anywhere in the state if you compare by agency size. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comment. Let's come up with a game plan for series that ensures our community retains the wonderful public servants that we have here. Respectfully, Carol Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Is that the last and only email?
That is the last email, and we do have a hand raised on Zoom.
Hey, go ahead.
Maria, go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hello, hi, my name is Maria. I did wanna make a comment now that you're talking about that. I just barely logged in. Last time I had an incident. I know there are some people there on the council who are very aware of my situation. I have a neighbor who has been stalking me and harassing me for eighteen years. And I he, I don't wanna say his name. I don't like, I don't like to be like that. But they know very well who he is. And I called the police department because he likes to play with himself in front of my son and me, and he did it again. And I keep, and I reported it already, I have it on video, they sent it to the police department, sent it forward to the district attorney. The district attorney didn't do anything about it. This time, my camera didn't record it because we were inside the car, we were pulling into my driveway when he did it. He was grabbing himself, he was outside mowing his lawn. And I called the police to report, and nobody came. They just told me that I had to file an incident report. I tried, and there's, there's no way that I can, you know, they give you all kinds of options, right, to choose to file the report. Didn't say nothing about stalking, harassment. So then the police officer did call me, and I did get an incident report, but I'm seeing what you're saying, that you guys are short-staffed, and I think that was one of the reasons why nobody came and talked to him. And I see for these, all these years, I did, I've actually complained, I've filed a couple complaints against police officers there, where I always see that they come and they yell at me when they go to his house, they shake his hand. He's on a friendly basis with them because they know him personally because he's involved in the community. And and nothing gets done about it, they don't, they just come to my house and they start yelling at me. Like telling me, why you have cameras? Why you, they're pointing at his house? No, they're not pointing at his house. The police department told me, they told me themselves to place cameras because I would always report, and I never had proof. So now that I have proof of what he does, they still don't listen to me. They don't talk to him, they don't tell him to stop. So that's why he continues. And I would like for you know, for them to be talked to, I'm gonna have to meet with the new chief. Maybe he might talk to this police officers. And I'm gonna start reporting and complaining each time when they come and yell at me. And I did report it. I did call the one of the sergeants. I have everything written now, but I don't have the paperwork on me right now, but it just continues, and I ignore him, we've gone to court, I've tried to, I've got restraining orders on him. And then he tries to retaliate by lying and saying that I'm stalking him, and that's very untrue. I went, that's not me, why would I do that? But anyways, it's a long story, but yeah, we're very short-staffed, and we need more police officers who, we just, we do, I know maybe the budget, but it's our safety, it's safety first for the community here. And people, when it comes to people harassing and stalking women or a man, either way, that's unacceptable, and the police officers, I know sometimes their hands are tied, but when I see with my own eyes that they're on a friendly basis with him, that to me is unacceptable. So I just wanted to mention that because I'm, I'm way to the point where I don't know what to do anymore. My son's seventeen years old, he's a minor. He'll be going to college, but he doesn't, he doesn't even know how to ride a bike because whenever he would want to go outside, this guy would just sit in his car and just stare at him. My son can't walk to school. He can't walk home, I always have to take him. I work part-time, I quit my job for the county, so I can watch after my son because this guy was stalking my son and stalking me, and nobody would listen. So I just wanna let you know just how bad things sometimes can be. Thank you very much for listening to.
Thank you. Is there another hand raised, or is that it?
There are no more hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now close citizens communications and move on to, is there any conflicts of interest from the city council? Seeing none? Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be acted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like to pull an item? Seeing none? Any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Yes, sir. Tip up to the podium, please.
I just wanted to say, I apologize, you know, for anything that I've done, I don't know if that's okay to speak about it right now. This is my first time being in this building, so I don't know how that works.
Your time would have been during citizens communication, so unfortunately.
So I can't speak right now then?
Unless it's on the item for consent calendar, sir. If there's an opportunity, maybe we'll have somebody talk to you once we're completed. Thank you. Any other, any members of the public that'd like to pull an item? Seeing none?
Make a motion to approve items one through seven of the consent calendar. Or the entire consent calendar, I apologize.
Second it.
Roll call.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Otero.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Hi.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion items. Directional setback in accessory building structure regulations related to carports. This is only a discussion. Who will lead on this?
Mayor Leeson Black is community development director. So I just wanna go through a brief history of how we got here this evening. On October twenty eighth, six members of twenty twenty four, six members of the public spoke during public comment and identified that four of them had received notices of violation from code enforcement for having illegally constructed carports in their front yards. Council member Martinez made a referral to review the carport ordinance and to see if anything could be done to help legalize some of these structures. At the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four hearing, council member Martinez received consensus for to have staff kind of review the current carport ordinance and potentially bring back some recommendations. At this time, I'm just going to go over our current ordinance and not to give the punchline away, we don't have a carport ordinance. But what we do have are setback regulations related to structures and buildings and our front yard setbacks and our corner side setbacks. In the front yard setback in the R one, single-family zoning district, the setback is a minimum of twenty feet and thirty five feet for attached accessory structures. And currently, no accessory buildings are allowed in the corner side setback. Exterior corner setback is fifteen feet for non-accessory structures, so if you have a main dwelling, it needs to be set back fifteen feet. And then we also have a height limitation of two stories or twenty five feet for main dwellings, but only fifteen feet for detached accessory structures. The staff report that you had this morning kind of went through different definitions, just to be clear, as, you know, what is a structure? What is a building? Is a carport a structure? Is an accessory structure a carport? And if you read some of those definitions, you'll find that a carport is a structure. And depending on how it's placed on site, if it's within six inches of the main dwelling, it is considered part of the main structure and would have to be twenty feet back. If it's greater than six feet away, six inches away from the main structure, it is identified as an accessory structure, it would have to be thirty five feet setback from the front property line. So a lot of people are wondering, what is the point of a setback? They're universally accepted as ways to maintain a consistent street frontage, to provide adequate spacing between buildings, to ensure sufficient natural light and air circulation between structures, to minimize fire spread risk, and to generally promote a cohesive-looking neighborhood and aesthetics, and it's within the city's zoning police power to regulate aesthetics so that you have a consistent visually appealing neighborhood. So at this point, you might, you know, what are your next steps? Council member Martinez suggested forming a subcommittee to look at our current regulations, and this subcommittee would have to look at things like height, material, size, location, anchoring standards, removing the carport from the definition of a building and changing some of those current definitions so that you can kind of separate carports out if you would like to see different standards applied to those types of structures. But it is important to note that some of the recommendations you may make still might not legalize all of the carports that have been presented to you, that have received violations. The code currently does not allow structures of any kind in utility easements. Many of these structures are located have footings and utility easements that if any work had to be done in those easements, utility companies would not have to replace those carports. Have footings and utility easements that, that if, um, any work had to be done in those easements, utility companies would not have to replace those carports. Some of these current carports do inhibit the line of sight for their neighbors and, um. Creating a standard that would allow that type of obstruction wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. Um, some of the structures are currently too tall, so if you do set some height standards or height limits. Some of the ordinance, uh, carports that are under violation would not get to be kept. Some sites have more than one, so if you do set a number of carports allowable on a site. Those, some of the people who have received violations would still be in violation. And then if you select certain materials, they're all made of different materials, so depending on what you were to select. Some people may not get to still keep their carports. So, um. At this time, I guess I would turn it over to the council to. With any questions and, um, I'm available for questions as well.
Thank you. Councilmember, this is an opportunity to have a discussion on this item. Nobody has pressed a button.
Okay, so I do have, sorry about that. I do have a few thoughts about this, um. You know, based on what Leah shared with us and thank you for all that information. You know, the city doesn't really have what's called a carport ordinance. Um, there's other. Regulations out there in regards to the structures and everything. Um. I feel it's important for us to protect our neighborhood appearance. Um, the ordinances are there to help keep the neighborhoods looking consistent and staying maintained. Um, I think with all the different types of carports that someone can build. Or build, it can be very confusing to people as to if we made any kind of change to the code. What is required, what's not required? Some are going to get notices again, some are not. Um, how do you really dive in and choose? Um, which one is going to be best for our entire city? Obviously, these kind of ordinances, um, reflect what the community wants. Um, but changing them without broad support from publics, from the public could leave many residents feeling unheard. Um, I would like to not prevent any more confusion than what there already is. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're prioritizing fairness, we're being safe in our community. I know that some of these structures may cause obstruction. When either there's kids riding bikes or someone trying to pull out of their driveway or just, uh, driving down the street. And then one last thing I do want to note is that, um. I feel some people are upset over our code enforcement going out and issuing these notices. And we do have code enforcement there to help us to enforce some of these ordinances and. Right now, you know, I think we can all agree that we want to see more enforcement and we want to see code enforcement be proactive. But when we do, you know, we want to be careful and, um. And not get upset about, you know, exactly what they're, they're trying to do. Do their job. Um, but for me, it's important that prior to notices being given, we can educate the public. That's always key, so that way all of the residents can be on the same page. But, um, again, I think it's important for us to maintain and keep our city clean. And I'm not sure modifying anything in the current ordinance or current regulations, um. Is going to change much because there's so many different types of carports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there was six members of the public that came to a few meetings, uh, you know, they had been cited, they had. These carports, they were facing these issues, they weren't understanding, uh, or they weren't aware of the code. Um, we asked staff, I personally asked staff. Uh, to give us this review that Leah just gave us. And after having heard what she said, spoken with code enforcement and driven around, uh, the community and, and looked at some of these carports and realized that. A lot of them aren't just breaking the ordinance of having a carport, but they've either cemented their front yards completely, which is against our ordinance. Their parking vehicles, boats, jet skis, trash cans out under them. They've. Seem to have just taken one ordinance that they've broken and then stacked it on top of three or four others. Uh, so I know at first I was open to listening to an idea of maybe changing this or revisiting it. But, uh, at this point, I don't feel like the extra stress on staff would be, uh, necessary. I feel it's, it's, it's good how it is. And, uh, my only question would be, how do we enforce it moving forward? We've got limited resources in our code enforcement. We need to make sure that, you know, they have an opportunity to go out, do their jobs, cite anyone that is breaking in an ordinance. Um, and then, you know, we follow up and, and like Councilmember Otero said, educate them if they are breaking it. Find ways to work with them to, to resolve the issue, but I think at this point I would be, uh, in favor of revisiting or changing the ordinance as it stands.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have to concur with both, um, Montero and Martinez. Um, I also think that we need to have, be consistent and fair and maintain a safe environment, making sure. That she mentioned children on bicycles. I know you guys both have children. I have adult children. I have grandchildren. Um, who do like to ride and run across the street to the park and stuff, so I do think if there was something blocking them and then they're, you know, walking to the crosswalk, then we have another issue. Although I wish we could do something, I think it's important that we still maintain the legalities. I know Leah and I kind of. Got a little bit of your brain there because I needed to know what the legal requirements are, because the building code is still required and I want to make sure we're still following the building, building code. Making sure we have our fire department that still has their access. Um, because again, we see these wildfires right now down in Los Angeles and now San Diego. And we don't want that same thing happening here with just one small fire down in River Bluff and coming up and then. Now we have East Gate and it's now something similar to what we have down in Malibu. And I definitely don't want that and that's kind of why I relied on you a lot, on trying to give me information on what I needed. Um, to make sure that we're within the legal standings and we don't turn into something like we see right now that's devastating. Southern California and I think that's really important as well as making sure we're keeping our neighbors safe and our community safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with everything that's been said. Uh, we have unfortunately allowed things to get out of hand. I understand. That we've actually had people come to the city, ask for permission, permission's denied. They go ahead and build it anyway. So it's, it's a sad thing that, uh, these people have invested money. Uh, where do you draw the line? Will you draw the line with the regulations we have? Driving around, you, you notice plenty of them, the, the neighborhood, uh, fence. So many of them were right up against the neighborhood fence, uh. So it's an unfortunate thing that somehow. Whoever is responsible, whether it was our previous fire department or code enforcement, we've let this thing get way out of hand. Now I take it back to the staff, bigger way to get all of those taken down and clean up the city. It's a tough deal and it's unfortunate that. Uh, maybe it was convenient that we waited until after the election. I don't know, but it, it's just. I, I told my wife this, this afternoon when I was reviewing stuff. I said, you know, the Jim Casey that lives on Hilo Lane goes to work ninety percent of the time. None of this stuff bothered me before, but five of us have taken an oath. To uphold the rules and regulations, not only of the federal government in the state. So we have, we're, you know, we've agreed to do that, so unfortunately for all those that are out there. And who knows how many, maybe hundreds are out there, something has to be done and it has to be done fairly quickly. And we have a strong mayor, I'm sure he'll be able to handle it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Do we have a quick question? Is, even though this is a discussion item, do we open it up to the public or?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a agenda item for public.
Okay, so we will now open this up to the public. Any members of the public?
It's, it's, uh, it's true what you guys are saying. Some of, some of the carports, I went around and checked and, and some of them are crossing the lines and some are not. Uh. And it's kind of unfortunate, I've been counting and, uh, you guys have a lot of work to do. There's about over eight hundred of them. So there's a lot of work that you guys are going to have to do. Uh, I have two carports. I use them for my ministry. Um, it was, it was pretty good this week. I mean, we send, uh, twenty-eight pallets to LA for the, the fire over there and. It was hectic on Mitchell and Joy because trucks were coming in and trucks were leaving, but it was awesome to have shade or, you know, to, to do it. But if we have to take them off, we'll, we'll take them off or we have to set us, setback, whatever we have to do, uh, we have to follow the laws. And, and I'm willing to do whatever you guys want us to do. And I just want to tell you, uh, my, my house is not R one, mine is residential, uh, commercial. So I don't know if it's a different rule, different law. I'm going to have to sit down with you guys because mine, on Mitchell and Joy, mine's, uh. It's a commercial, uh, commercial. So I got to get schooled, so you let me know what I have to do. And if I have to take them down, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll take them down, you know, and, uh. And if, I mean, I use it for, for feeding people and we do about thirty-seven hundred people a week. If we give them groceries, like I said, we sent twenty-eight, twenty-nine pallets to LA. But, uh, yeah, so. I agree with the, if there's rules, we got to follow. And, uh, I got two of them. I spent eleven thousand dollars on them. That's, uh, money that we didn't have for the, for the, you know, for our stuff, but, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Let me know if, if, if the commercial or the residential, what's the difference?
Staff should be able to reach out. Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment?
John Warren, City of Series. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight and for their wisdom in making the decisions. That, uh, they've just explained to the general public. Um, prior to reading Leah's, um, nice. Report, um, I had done quite a bit of research. I'm pretty familiar with what the rules were regarding, um, these, uh, accessory structures. And where they could be placed on the property. Whether with a permit or without a permit. But generally speaking, homeowners and people who buy properties. Um, know or should know. That to build anything in addition to the home that's there and the garage, you're probably going to have to have a permit from the city. Uh, to install a new water heater in your garage, you need a permit from the city. And the permitting process is, we all know, uh, have a lot of safety things in it that safeguard the community and, and the homeowner. And so if you go down and ask, you're generally going to find out, and I think what Mr. Casey said there was true. And I can relate to that because, uh, in regards to these carport things. In my own neighborhood, I asked some of my neighbors who had them when I wanted to put one up. And they told me, John, you can't do that. I went to the city, they told me no, and I built it anyway. Okay, and unfortunately, these things happen. There's a lot of good folks in the community that are going to be. Um, burdened by, uh, what's going to happen. I think it's a shortfall of the community. When you see these things driving around, these are major things in a person's property. It's not a small violation of the municipal code, like leaving your garbage cans out where someone can see them. This is a major building and a construction that's going on that might endanger the neighbors or whatever. And so when someone from the city sees that, it should get reported to the proper department. So that they can notify that person, hey, you can't do that. You need to remove it. Well, thank you very much, council, for your, uh, um, insight into this and I appreciate your allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else? That's a big comment in person? Seeing none, but there are some hands raised?
We do have two hands raised. V Chavez, you can go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening, City Council and, um, Mayor Lopez. Um, I apologize for not being able to attend in person, but I wanted to ensure that my opinion is heard. Um, I strongly urge the council to not allow carports. Um, allowing them. Will detract from the cleanliness and overall aesthetic of our city. These carports will unlikely be properly maintained. And will likely become an eyesore, much like the cars and the food trucks that I see parked on lawns. Um, additionally, they will most likely be used for storage, um, further contributing to mess and clutter in front yards. Um, and with storage comes a risk of attracting rodents, um, as these areas can easily become breeding grounds. I take pride in maintaining a clean city and a well-kept yard and I believe others should do the same. Um, but that's not always the case. Um, I really appreciate the work, um, that the gentleman with the ministry, um, who spoke, you know, is doing. But unfortunately, cleanliness is not so common anymore. Um. So once again, I urge you to not allow carports. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Chavez, can you state your first name, please?
Yes, my name is Valerie.
Thank you.
Second hand.
Mr. Geekly, you can go ahead and unmute your mic. Mr. Geekly, you'll need to unmute your mic. We cannot hear you on our end.
Can't hear him. Mr. Geekly, sorry about that, but your microphone's not working at the moment. We're going to have to move on. Bring this back to the council. Um, before we move forward, I would like to say I, my one thing that I did notice about this conversation is. Collaboration between the community and the city council in trying to resolve an issue that they felt was important. And also thank you, Mr. Martinez, for at least making this consideration. Every single council member and your comments are very valid, I believe, and thank you for coming up. You've actually been showing up to every single, single city council meeting for this, so I really respect your opinion and thank you very much. So I know there were some questions, right? Um, as far as direction. One of them was from Mr. Martinez. He had a particular question. How do we enforce this moving forward?
Yeah, how do we enforce moving forward? Yes, sir.
Did I miss anything else from the council?
I have one thing as well. Um, as we move forward. Um, I'd like to just see a timeline on the timeframe where allowing people to take down their carports. I'm sure you guys will have something. Because as you know, taking these down, it's going to cost money to haul off the. Um, all of the carports and everything. And then one last thing, I do want to thank you for everything you do in your ministry. I really appreciate it. And feeding all those people and helping out down in Southern California. Thank you.
Didn't want to miss any particular, uh, directions from this, uh, council whatsoever. So the, uh, all we're saying is that we're not changing anything and then those are just the two questions that we have. That is the only direction we have. Thank you very much, everybody. We will now move on to council member referrals. Is there any referrals from any council members? Left to right. Seeing none. Moving on to reports, I have nothing to report. City council members, I see one button pressed. Did you press your button? Oh, that's because the names are backwards. That's right.
Um, so on Martin Luther King Day, um, the city of the Series Police Department participated in the Healthy Room Project. Which is a organization that, um, remodels family homes. Here in the Central Valley, there's other places that do it down in Southern California. But I want to specifically thank Lieutenant Travis Hudson for coordinating the effort and for getting officers together, um. To complete our first room in the city of Series. That family really appreciated the. It's nice to see the child's eyes light up when they saw the room makeover, so. Thank you very much for coordinating that and I look forward to additional ones that you guys bring to the city.
Any other council members? Anything to report? Councilmember Vera?
Sorry, I didn't really have much to report. I just wanted to see if Sam can touch on the free community disposal that's coming up. And then what steps we can do about the community. Um, I see some of the leaf and limb still in the road. And if you can just kind of remind everyone of the process. Thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, um, um, Mayor of City, City Council, I just want to let you know that, uh, this coming Saturday. The, uh, the city will be holding the third annual event, uh, for the, uh. Uh, for the, uh, Free Community Disposal Day. It'll be held at the River Bluff, um, it starts at around eight o'clock in the morning. It'll be held up until eleven forty-five AM. Um, so you could bring, uh, or, or asking citizens to bring their, uh, their waste, but no hazardous waste will be accepted, uh, no, uh, no leaf and limb would be accepted except for mattresses, tires, um, any, any other, um, uh, uh, objects that you have that you want to dispose. Uh, appliances, TVs, you name it. Um, as far as the living room, uh, living room program ended on January ninth. Um, however, we are, um, we're gonna be enforcing, um, uh, residents to, uh, to comply with the, uh, the latest, uh, uh, notification that we allowed the residents to, to use, to use a berlotti as a, as a service. Uh, uh, it's not a free charge, it's, it's, there are charges to it. Uh, but we're gonna be starting enforcing, uh, with, uh, with notices at the beginning and then, uh, we'll, uh, we'll follow up, uh, three days after. And if those are not, uh, picked up, then we'll, we'll go ahead and start, uh, applying, uh, fines to the residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Casey, anything to report? Okay, I'll go back to city manager, anything to report? City attorney, any of the other department hits? Any additional comments? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go into closed session for conference with legal counsel regarding anticipation litigation, California Government Code five four nine five six point nine, and the Conference of Public Employment Performance Evaluation, California Government Code five four nine five seven B one regarding the city manager. If, if there, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak during this, uh, for this closed session, now is the time. Seeing none, and after the closed session, we'll return. Thank you very much.
Welcome back everybody. Um, direction has been given to staff and there's no reportable action. Have a good night.